Okay.
All right, Avery just gave me the thumbs up.
Welcome everyone to the Wednesday, October 6, 2021, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Asheville. Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public comment on items listed on the agenda. There are three ways to submit public comment. You can do it through pre-recorded voicemail comments to 855-925-2801. That is only available until 5:00 PM before the meeting. Written public comments are always accepted. We're also taking live public comment during the meeting. You can watch the meeting live through the Engagement Hub or through the city's YouTube channel. We will begin with roll call. I think you're muted, Shannon.
Vice Chair Archibald.
Here.
Commissioner Faircloth.
Present.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Levi.
Here.
Commissioner Barton.
Here.
And Commissioner Hope.
Here.
All right, Mr. Vice Chair, we do have a quorum. We are expecting Commissioner Bubenek to join us here shortly.
Okay, thanks. First item we have is the approval of the minutes from the September 1st, 2021 meeting. Everybody had a chance to review those?
I move to approve the minutes of the September 21st, 2021 meeting.
We have a motion and a second. That was Breton that seconded?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because we have a motion and a second, let's do a show of hands and say aye. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved unanimously. I would like to go ahead and-
Kim, can we, I'm sorry to interrupt, Kim, I'm not sure if your hand came up late that you were opposing the minutes. I just want to clarify. We can't hear you.
Your voices. Okay. I think she might be having some technical difficulties. We'll give her a minute. I was, I did want to welcome our newest commission member, Jeffrey Barton, to our group. You want to introduce yourself real quick, Jeffrey, at all?
Sure, yeah, happy to be a part of the commission and thank you, looking forward to working with you all. And let's get rolling.
All right. Second thing on the agenda is the election of officers. So every October, we elect a new chair and vice chair for the commission. We've kind of reviewed what the regulations are for that. So given that I am currently the vice chair, I will step aside since I am unable to make a motion for anybody to sit for the chair.
So we have just two commissioners eligible for the officer positions, Mr. Archibald and Ms. Levi. So if someone would like to make a recommendation for one of those two individuals, then we can move things along.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Commissioner Archibald as our, as your new chair. And can I do, we do it one at a time, or can we do both?
I think you can do both.
And I would like to nominate Commissioner Levi to serve as co-chair.
Second.
Joe, are you not taking the roll call?
I can vote for yourself. A lot of people do.
No, sorry, I can do the roll call vote if you want me to.
Sure.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second. I'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Faircloth.
Aye.
Commissioner Barton.
Aye.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Aye.
And that's, Commissioner Hope.
Aye.
And Commissioner Levi.
Well.
Yes, you can vote for yourself.
Yes.
Well, yeah, I guess you can. But Commissioner Levi.
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well, although that seems kind of weird, voting for yourself. But so the motion passes unanimously for chair and vice chair.
And Kim, now that we have your voice back, can you affirm, or can you confirm that you were supporting the adoption of the minutes, or did you have a concern about the minutes?
I support the adoption of the meeting minutes from last commission meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Okay, let's dive right in. So the first item we have on the agenda is a zoning map amendment. This happens to be for a project that came through several years ago. It is a request to amend a conditional zoning ordinance adopted on October 9, 2018, ordinance number 4702, to remove a restriction on drive-through uses. The property is located at 511 Brevard Road and identified as PIN 9627974214 on the Buncombe County tax record. The owner is Bear Creek Holdings LLC, and the project contact is Derek Allen. Planner coordinating review is Shannon Tuck. I will let Ms. Tuck take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as Mr. Archibald had introduced, this is a conditional zoning amendment for the property located at 511 Brevard Road. So here's the Exhibit A map from 2018, when this conditional zoning first came through to city council. The property is approximately three acres. It's located at the intersection of Brevard Road and South Bear Creek, just north of the interstate, just north of I-40, in west, I guess you'd call that West Asheville. The property was zoned highway business. The request back in 2018 was to split zone it, even though it was conditional zoning. They wanted to split conditional zone it, with the bottom two acres to be zoned to lodging expansion and the upper acre or so to be retained as highway business. However, it was still conditionally zoned. So it's lodging expansion conditional zone for the bottom two acres and highway business conditional zone for the upper acre. And that was for the purpose of constructing a 106-room, four-story hotel on that lower portion of the property. And at the time, the applicant didn't have any development plans for that upper acre, but they didn't need it for the hotel. So they wanted to kind of hold it out for some future development. So the approval in 2018 includes just sort of that empty parcel to be developed at a later date under the highway business standards. So in looking at the aerial imagery, it kind of gives you a little better, better sense of the context. You see the, in 2018, you see the interstate there at the bottom of the map on the south end, and the undeveloped parcel that's located at the intersection of Brevard and South Bear Creek. It's, it's a little bit deceiving. It looks like it's kind of tucked inside a cloverleaf. And I think that is, looks that way in part because of just the natural shape of South Bear Creek Road. So the controlled access for the interstate actually ends, it's a little hard to tell probably on your screen, but it kind of ends somewhere in this area. So the interstate includes these, these ramps, the, the main lanes of traffic. And then it comes across and it captures just maybe this little bit of right-of-way. And I'm not 100% sure. That might just be some unusually wide right-of-way. But typically, when you see right-of-way like this, it's, it's because it's part of the controlled access. That's important because if you have controlled access, as the name would suggest, it's controlled access. You cannot access that portion of the road. So if you wanted to construct a new road into a subdivision or add a driveway for a new business, you cannot do that through controlled access right-of-way. So where you have the state-maintained road of South Bear Creek, that is not controlled access. So you could have driveways or additional roads or things like that. So that's going to be an important point that I will get to here in just a moment. So in 2019, there's another aerial image. So you, you can kind of see, get a better sense of, of the, the location and the provenance of that hotel as it relates to the different road infrastructure. And you can see the hotel more or less occupies that lower two-thirds of the property with that upper one-third, one acre or so, just not being developed at this time. So when we look at conditional zonings, we always reference the future land use map that was adopted as part of the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan. And this property, as well as other properties along the corridor, are designated urban corridor. And that designation describes, it's basically a corridor in transition, that what might be sort of a more suburban style, vehiscularly oriented development pattern today is intended to transition to something that's more mixed-use, multi-story, compact, walkable design. So for conditional zonings, we always hold them to a higher standard. And, you know, the development should better reflect that future land use designation than, than, you know, something that might have just been more traditional 10 or 20 years ago. Because the development plan was relatively consistent with this designation and included a number of conditions that were consistent with that designation, a change to the future land use map was not required. So that is an option, is you can change the future land use map. And in some cases, it makes more sense to do so than others. But in this particular case, it was not deemed to be necessary. Here is the approved site plan from 2018. So again, you can see the hotel located there on the, the lower portion of the property. The applicant had intended to, or I don't think it's been completed yet, but the proposal was to subdivide the lot so that you have Lot 1, which is the hotel property, and then Lot 2, which would be the future highway business development. So the, I mentioned that the hotel was a four-story, 106-room hotel. That urban corridor designation is reflected in the plan through some of the, the multimodal conditions and site features that were incorporated into the plan. So you have sidewalk on both Brevard Road that you can see, if you see my cursor kind of here along Brevard Road. You have sidewalk also here on South Bear Creek. When this parcel, the parcel 2, when that is developed, then additional sidewalk will be required to be constructed along the rest of that South Bear Creek frontage. So it will create a continuous loop or a continuous segment of sidewalk. Also included in the plan or in the conditions for the project were sidewalk connections from the hotel, both to Brevard Road through here, as well as out to South Bear Creek through a crosswalk in the parking lot, and then out to the road. There was also a condition for pedestrian signal across South Bear Creek and a greenway easement along Brevard Road. Both of those conditions were written in such a way because that requires either Buncombe County or NC DOT support and cooperation. So if for some reason those entities didn't want them or didn't feel like they could support that, the applicant wasn't going to be held to that standard. But it was included as a condition. And then the other multimodal condition is a new transit shelter to be located on Brevard Road. So to be consistent with all of this multimodal infrastructure and interest in this property, the only condition that was added regarding Lot 2, other than saying that it's, it's, it's allowed to be developed, you know, consistent with highway business, is that no drive-throughs were going to be permitted. And that is because, drive-throughs, because of their, the windows and the queuing lines and the way the traffic is typically routed, is they, they almost always create direct conflicts with pedestrian, pedestrians and bicyclists. So it wasn't felt to be appropriate at this location. So there was a lot of flexibility that it can be developed under the highway business standards, didn't need to go back to city council for re-review, but we wanted this particular assurance that we wouldn't have to worry about this kind of conflict moving forward. So the request that's before you is to change the conditions, and specifically to lift the condition regarding the drive-throughs, the prohibition on the drive-throughs. So that is condition number 12 in the approved ordinance from 2018. And that condition reads, "Future uses on Lot 2 shall conform to uses permitted in the highway business district and comply with all applicable, excuse me, applicable standards as required in the UDO and other technical standards." Period. No drive-throughs will be permitted on Lot 2. I've underlined that for emphasis. It doesn't read that way in the ordinance, but for the purposes of this slide, I wanted to point that out. The applicant is asking for a change to that condition to simply eliminate that second sentence, to lift that prohibition on drive-throughs, so that that Lot Number 2 could be developed with a business that has a drive-through. All of the other conditions are proposed to remain unchanged. So we don't have to worry about those. So the review process for this is a little bit unique in that the, the, because there are no changes to the site plan, we did not take this application to technical review. So it just went, so it's just before you, you're the first stop in this amendment review process. Your recommendation will be carried to city council, who will be the final deciding body. That is tentatively scheduled for either late October or early November. So in summary, staff does not support the, the change to condition number 12, given the emphasis in the comprehensive plan for goals regarding mixed-use, multimodal development patterns that enhances the pedestrian environment. Combined with, there's another set of goals in the comprehensive plan regarding carbon reduction as part of our sustainability measures. So as a result of these two sets of goals, staff does not recommend approval of this change to the project conditions. As an alternative, and we had suggested that the applicant may want to consider a revision to the site plan, that would have to go to technical review if they wanted to pursue that, that minimized the impacts on the pedestrian environment. That could demonstrate that those impacts are minimized. So something that has very limited windows or very limited queuing. It is possible to design a drive-through queue that does not directly conflict with pedestrian pathway. It's, it's tricky, especially with certain franchise models, because they're very committed to their design styles. But, but it is possible. And so we recommended to the applicant that maybe that's a possibility. You want to consider coming back with an actual site plan revision that shows that those impacts would not be significant. They wanted to first come to this meeting and kind of explain the request from their point of view. So I will conclude my presentation and kind of turn it over to them to discuss and introduce it from their perspective. Before I do so, are there any questions from the commission?
Doesn't sound like there's any, so.
Okay. And I believe Derek Allen was the applicant, but I believe Dameys Sessay is here in his stead. Is, I think I saw her enter the meeting.
I'm here. Can you hear me, Shannon?
Yep, we can hear you. And I've, I've got your presentation up. So if you just want to tell me when to advance the screen, I'd be happy to do that.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And I think this is the last page of the presentation, then.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Good evening, Vice Chair Archibald and Commissioners. My name is Dameys Sessay. I'm an attorney at Allen-Stallman-Kilborn. And this evening, I'm representing Bear Creek Holdings LLC in our conditional zoning amendment application. I think you heard from Shannon that the original project was approved in 2018, and the ordinance was adopted in October 9th of 2018. And this hotel was a mainstay suites and would, includes 106 guest rooms and not more than 106 parking spaces. And that was specifically on Lot 1, which was the 2.2 acres. And that was zoned as lodging expansion, expansion conditional zone. Lot 2, which is the subject that we're here for today, is 1.1 acres. That's highway business conditional zone. And I don't know if you recall, but this was the last hotel approved before the moratorium. So as Shannon mentioned, our conditional zoning amendment really addresses what I think is a relatively simple request on Lot 2. Could you go ahead and switch to side, the second slide, please? We are asking to remove the last line of condition 12, which prohibits the drive-through on lots 2. As you know, Lot 2 is located in the highway business conditional zone, and drive-throughs are permitted as of right. The conditions did not, conditions excluded the drive-through, because I think that was something that was recommended either by staff or someone back in 2018. Unfortunately, the minutes don't reflect it, and we don't recall why that occurred. But I do want to make it clear that they are permitted as of right. And at this point, there's no development plan on Lot 2 yet. Are the developers still exploring options and speaking with potential lessees? From my understanding, staff's opposition is relatively limited. One of the primary issues they have is that they want to ensure that this complies with a comprehensive plan. And I'd like to remind the commissioners that one of the goals of the comprehensive plan is for economic and business development, including facilitating real estate development, which is what the developer here is trying to do. And the developer is striving to do so in a manner that is beneficial to the community and also realistic. Shannon mentioned some of the suggestions and recommendations from staff that we've had while this application has been pending. And the developer has every intention of trying to ensure that one of those recommendations are, are used or taken into consideration here. Like I said before, that at this time, there is no development plan in place. Another one of the issues that staff has is the carbon emission concern. Frankly speaking, if you could go ahead and switch to the next slide for me, please. If you look at the map on my slide here, you can see that we are on an, on an interstate. So there really is no additional carbon emission issue, because there is, there are going to be cars along this area. If you look around the area, there is no other real way to access the hotel or the surrounding areas without using vehicles. So this one drive-through, it's highly unlikely that it would increase in carbon emissions, excuse me, carbon emissions. The other, what I think is their major concern is walkability. As you can see from the map, South Bear Creek is a two-way street, and NC 191 has three lanes of traffic in both directions. That's six lanes of traffic. And our property is essentially in the middle of a cloverleaf. Whether it technically is or it's not, that's essentially what it is here. And in terms of areas where pedestrian, traffic would be high, that's just not the case here. There's no way that we're going to have pedestrian traffic in this corridor. And as you can see, that quarter's built for vehicles, and that's what's occurring here. And if you look, if I can share with you a little bit about the, the properties that are already there. Unfortunately, I don't, I can't control the screen. But what you'll see around the area is the Motor Mile, all down along that 191 area. You'll also see that there's a hospital there. I think it's the Aston Park Healthcare Center. There, no one is walking there. That's a vehicle, that's only reachable by vehicle. A lot of the area around the cloverleaf is also restricted access. That's not going to change. And then there's a state property, if you further down toward the Motor Mile, as well as that top left-hand property is the Bear Creek Real Estate. It's owned by Bear Creek Real Estate, and it's the old Ingalls family property, which is also not being developed, and is unlikely to be something that would be walkable as well. Can you go ahead and switch to the next slide, please? And Shannon showed us the conditions earlier. Condition 8 required the city to request that NC DOT approve and build a pedestrian crossing across Brevard Road and South Bear Creek. And it's been three years, almost exactly three years on the 9th. And I don't know if the city has not made this request, or NC DOT does, has not approved it. But it's clear that it hasn't been approved. And I think there's a reason for that, because this area is just not particularly walkable. If you look at that, what's a closer view of that area, you can see that. I think some additional considerations that my client has and are really important in helping you make your decision is that we are now in a post-pandemic world. Very few people are willing to make that human contact, to walk into buildings, commercial centers, things of that nature. And frankly, this drive-through piece in this environment is extremely important, and our potential lessees are demanding it. And so that's also playing an impact on why this land has not been developed. And then we've also spoken with our neighbors, specifically, we spoke with Bear Creek Real Estate, which represents them. And they're the ones most closely located to this and most likely to be impacted by construction of a drive-through in that area. And they've made it clear that they have no objection. Frankly speaking, providing this condition will allow our client to actually develop this property, and will have no, no real negative impact, and in our opinion, will be in line with the comprehensive plan. So I ask that you approve our amendment request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sessay, and also Ms. Tuck for the presentations. Are there any comments or questions from the commission at this point before we open for public comment?
I just know I've, I've driven there around that many times, and I don't see any pedestrian traffic in that area.
Yes, Gia?
Considering that there are no, there are no pedestrian improvements in that area right now, that doesn't mean it can't be in, in the future. So I think these statements about how there are no pedestrians there, of course there are no pedestrians there. This is a, in its current condition, it's not conducive to any pedestrian activity. It doesn't mean it can't be designed into a future project.
Yeah, I know Mr. Rodriguez was on the commission when this came through originally, as was I. And, you know, that was, those conditions of having the sidewalk and doing the pedestrian improvements and the transit shelter, you know, that was all based on the fact that at some point, there will be a greenway that runs either along Brevard Road or below Brevard Road, or somewhere around in that area. And the idea is that, you know, there is certainly the potential for pedestrians along there. And, you know, certainly, you know, a lot of people may not think it, but there are people that, that ride on Highway 191, because it is a way to get out to Bent Creek, and it is actually on a bike route. So, you know, I'll, I'll go ahead and say, one of the concerns I have, I, I certainly appreciate the applicant's desire to have drive-through there. It makes sense. You know, if you look at it from just purely, here's roads, here's an interstate, what is there now? It makes absolute sense. So I was out there this morning. It was about 10 o'clock. And I came, you know, pulled up, went up into Bear Creek, you know, drove back around. And as I was coming down Bear Creek and was waiting to turn left at that light, which, if, you know, it is possible, it's just barely wide enough. Like, if you're the first car, someone could get to the right to be able to make that right-hand turn, which you can, you know, write on red. But once you get more than one car there, basically, it starts backing up. And I had three other cars behind me. I was the third car. There were three other cars behind me that wanted to turn right, but couldn't. So there were six cars in line, essentially, right there, waiting for this light to turn green, for any traffic to move. And that was at 10 o'clock. I know that South Bear Creek gets a lot of traffic. There's future development planned for that area. My big concern is that without any site plan that shows how the drive-through would work and/or other improvements that would be either proposed or even required by DOT as far as a dedicated right-hand turn lane, left-hand turn lane, I'm, I'm really hesitant to, to remove that condition right now. You know, I think if there was something that laid out what they propose to do here, then I certainly would feel a little more comfortable with that. So that, that's kind of where I'm at right now. And again, if there's, if there's no other- And again, if there's, if there's no other comments from the commission, I'll go ahead and open for public comment.
Would you like me to respond to your statement, Mr. Archibald?
Certainly, certainly.
I think, I understand your concern. I think what happens though is that it creates a catch 22 for the developer because the lessees and, or potential lessees at this point are unwilling to enter into any type of lease with such a strict restriction in, in an area that ordinarily would permit that. And like I think I mentioned before, and if I didn't, I want to make it clear that the staff has made recommendations that the developer is going to take into consideration, definitely, um, once there is a development, a development plan in place. And I think even back in 2018, as recommendations were made and considerate, and things were taken into consideration. This was one of those things that the developer tried to do as well to satisfy either staff or the commission. Like I said before, I don't know who. So this is not a situation with the developer that will, you know, just take it and run with it. They are, the best interest of this community in that area is definitely still extremely important to that developer. But as things stand with the way in our post pandemic world, there really is no way to guarantee development or a less see if a change is not made with that one line. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cisse. And, and I certainly do, I do understand and I appreciate what the developer has done, you know, thus far. You know, again, those are, my, my concerns are almost less ironically as someone who usually is all about the bikes and the pedestrians, less about the bikes and the pedestrians than about the car traffic that could potentially really back up along South Bear Creek Road, depending upon what other future development happens down that way. So. I'll go ahead and open for a public comment at 5:31.
Chair, there are no callers on the queue.
And I will close public comment at 5:31. Is there any other discussion among the commissioners?
So I just wanted, hi, I just wanted to clarify. So the conditional zoning was approved under a different zoning than the future land use map. The urban corridor, is that?
For the future land use map, those designations don't match zoning. There, there's just a handful of future land use map designations and we've got lots of different zoning districts. So the designation is broader, it's more of a vision, you know? We expect urban corridor to look like this. Yeah. Suitable zoning, there's multiple suitable zoning districts that can fall within that designation. So the property was or is conditionally zoned highway business. So highway business does allow drive-throughs by right. However, this property is conditionally zoned, which would not allow drive-throughs by right. So that's why they're before you this evening for that amendment.
Yes, Brenton.
Um, um, is there any comment from, as far as the drive-through? Uh, my concern is uh, access for emergency workers, fire, EMS, police, whatnot. Um, is there any comment or concern from those groups about not having that secondary access to the property?
So we don't know yet how the lot two will be developed. The, at the time in 2018, the, and, and it sounds like today still, the applicant or the property owner doesn't have a less see for the property. So we don't know, that less see will probably come in and say, they'll actually go through the permitting process and get approved. So as a result in 2018, rather than condition the approval to a specific plan, which is customarily what we do with conditional zonings, they felt comfortable leaving it open to be anything that highway business would normally allow with that one condition. So that was the only thing that they imposed on this project or on this property as it relates to, to future development.
Okay, thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong though, Mr. Faircloth. I think you were referring more to that, what's listed on the site plan. I don't know Shannon, if you can pull that up. There's um, what's labeled as a proposed temporary secondary access for fire.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That runs through lot two, which I did not see any signs of that being even started when I was out there this morning. And it seems like, based on my understanding and remember, and remembrance that that needs to be in before they can get a CO.
Yes, that is correct. So that, that is, so another reason this is a conditional zoning is we do this occasionally. You'll see out parcels, that, that there isn't a specific plan. But how that property connects to the, the other parcels around it, sometimes there are improvements that cross those properties like sidewalks or crosswalks or easements and things of that nature. In this case, a secondary access point. So this will have to be constructed as part of the hotel. So it may not be in place yet, but uh, either this is constructed or something of equal, um, that satisfies the, the fire marshal's office equally will, will be in place.
Is that, is that more what you were, were looking for, Mr. Faircloth, I think?
Uh, yes, that was my concern. So thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, the, so that we would anticipate the development would largely be located on this portion because that's just the, the larger portion of the site. So.
Okay. Uh, if there is no, Mr. Rodriguez.
I just want to, to reiterate, uh, uh, I do remember talking about this project and, and I would feel much more comfortable keeping the, the condition for no drive-throughs as is until we see, until my, my colleagues, uh, my future colleagues are presented a site plan. I, I just don't buy the argument that you have to do this simply because there are potential lessees. It's, we're not ready to do that at this point.
Thank you. Uh, at this point, if there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion if someone would like to make one.
I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to deny the conditional zoning amendment to ordinance number 4207 for the property located at 511 Brevard Road regarding the elimination of a prohibition on drive-through facilities and find that the request is not reasonable, is not in the public interest, is inconsistent with the city's comprehensive plan and fails to meet the development needs of the community in the, in that the request, number one, is inconsistent with the future land use category. Number two is contrary to numerous goals for the improved pedestrian safety and comfort. And three, does not support the goals of reducing carbon emissions.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Hope. Motion and a second. Do roll call vote. Mr. Hope.
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Faircloth.
Aye.
Ms. Levi.
Aye.
Mr. Barton.
Aye.
And Ms. Bubinik is still not with us and I will vote aye as well. So the motion passes. Uh, let's see, that makes it six to nothing. I, I just want to make the comment, I think, uh, at least for, you know, the applicant, you know, this really gets to a lot of those submissions that we sometimes see where there isn't a site plan and yet someone is asking for something and it's really hard to make those decisions without seeing those things laid out. You know, there are concerns and I think if we were to see those concerns actually addressed with a site plan with, you know, something that's on paper, it would make it much, much easier to deal with these, these kinds of issues. So again, I appreciate, you know, what you're trying to do, but you know, sometimes we need to just see a little more concrete work in front of us. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to the second item on the agenda, which is a request to implement phase two of the urban centers initiative that includes the rezoning of approximately 128 acres of property from regional business, river, residential, multifamily, high-density district RM16 and residential, single-family, medium-density district RS4 to urban place form district. The planner coordinating review is Vidila Sotvika. I will not read all of those parcel numbers. I think everyone can see those. Mr. Sotvika.
Thank you, and I will, I will show those parcel numbers on the screen so that everybody can review them on their own. My name is Vidila, yep, you're welcome. My name is Vidila Sotvika. Good afternoon, commissioners. This is the presentation of the urban place forum district for phase two of this initiative. As I think all of you are aware, um, last city council meeting, the city council voted to adopt the proposed text amendment for the urban place forum district. And they also adopted the map amendments for the phase one properties, which totaled about 122 acres. I want to point out that, uh, as you suggested at your P and Z, your, your, your meeting and review of, of phase one, you recommended that the parcel size for the residential component be reduced from 10 acres to five acres. Uh, we brought that along to city council and, and that is what was adopted. So I just want you to know that your actions do matter and do impact city policy. So, so this is the language that was included in the adopted text amendment.
Vidila, it's Janice. You just might want to point out the other change that council approved about the housing vouchers. That was just.
Yes. Yes, for clarification, um, oh, right, right, I'm sorry. That's also listed here. We had previously a standard that said at least 25% of affordable units should accept rental housing assistance, such as housing choice vouchers. Um, there was actually a typo in the code and it only said, it actually said 5%, but it was supposed to be 25%. But council requested that that be increased to 50%. So that is the new standard that was adopted. Thank you for that clarification, Janice. So what is impacted by the, the housing component? Uh, I'm showing here both the, the phase one and phase two because when you looked at this, the phase one properties, uh, you know, we were looking at the 10 acres. So this just highlights that, um, as part of phase two, there are seven properties that are larger than five acres that would be held to this higher standard that would, um, require housing in these locations. So what are we reviewing tonight? There are 11 proposed urban centers on the city's preferred growth scenario map, as you've seen before. Here, what you see circled is one of the, one node that is being proposed as a rezoning. And I just wanted to highlight and talk through a couple of slides that this is actually not a proposed urban center on the future land use map. It's, it's a, it's proposed as a town center, which is actually a higher intensity proposal for development. So it's consistent with urban centers, but it would allow for more intensity, a higher intensity development. So we could potentially see taller buildings there should they go through a city council review. And potentially in the future, a zoning may, may be adjusted to allow for greater development by right. So just to talk that through a little bit and to show you, um, what I'm talking about. Uh, this is a map, a snapshot from the future land use map. And the red that's highlighted or circled there is the area that you're reviewing, considering for the map amendment, uh, which is a town center. And on the bottom right, and I'm not sure if you can read it, but I'll, I'll just let, I'll read it for you. Appropriate zoning districts within the town center, future land use category may include office business, community business one, community business two, urban place, urban village, institutional, corresponding conditional zoning districts. So this is just to clarify that urban place is consistent with that zoning district. And this is another image from the comprehensive plan that again, shows a similar image of what we're trying to move away from, suburban, single-story, single-use development toward a higher intensity development, which admittedly will take many years. And this is just the beginnings of a very slow transition. But the, the comp plan even calls out the Asheville Mall as a, as a potential site for, for this, this vision. So now let's look specifically at the parcels that are being proposed. This is the, the list of pins that the commissioner chose to not read. And I won't read them either, but they're on the screen, probably large enough for everybody to see. Um, I'll, I'll highlight that the zoning districts are primarily regional business that make up 78% of the property. The river district, which is down on the bottom corner, makes up about 16%. And then you, we have some residential on a corner part of the mall. And, um, uh, this RS4, it's actually part of the mall, but you know, uh, it wasn't quite zoned properly. So we still have to rezone that. So they're proposed to move from these districts. And you can see by the way, uh, the UP here, that, that is the, the Sears property that was rezoned as part of council's last action. And we are proposing that this entire area will, will be rezoned to the urban place forum district. I'm not going over that district tonight because this is just about the rezoning. But if issues, if you have questions about that, I have the zoning code up and I can talk about them. That, that completes my presentation and I'll turn it over back to you, Commissioner Marchiball.
Thank you, Mr. Sotvika. Do any of the commissioners have any questions or anything they want to discuss? Ask Mr. Sotvika.
I had a couple of questions. Uh, one is, um, what's the status of the Tunnel Road corridor study? I know it's not completely related, but it seems relevant when we're talking about rezoning, you know, what we're expecting with the corridor study.
You're on mute, Vidila.
Okay. Um, my computer says that I've lost connection, but can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so we are bringing the, the corridor studies, uh, the three of them that we are currently reviewing to the city council, I believe to their next meeting.
And Vidila, I have an update on that. I actually just saw that Vidila froze. Hi, good evening, everyone. Tato Placheny, planning and urban design director. Um, the, the three corridor studies for Hendersonville Road, Biltmore Avenue and Tunnel Road have actually been continued for city council to be evaluated by city council at their, I believe their November meeting is when we're shooting for now, for that to be evaluated. And those are all presented to planning and zoning commission recently.
Yeah, I believe that was August meeting, I think that was. It was either July or August. Uh, Mr. Barton, if you wanted to look back, I know we had, we did see those. And I'm pretty sure, well, I know there's the websites for all of those are up. I'm sure you've probably already looked at that. So. I don't, it didn't necessarily go all the way down tunnel, this part of Tunnel Road, South Tunnel Road. It was mostly focused on tunnel and then as it makes the turn to go over to 240, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, the reason I ask is that the report, the final report that is going to go before city council, you know, talks about a really compatible vision to what we're talking about with the rezonings. But also kind of goes further and talks about strategy for implementation. And, um, you know, that's something that I think we need to consider when we're looking at rezoning, you know, this really large. You know, this really large area is, is it the, is the timing right? Or, you know, does it make more sense to come after the corridor study has been adopted? And if, and once there's more discussion about implementation, I mean, in particular. Infrastructure is going to be a significant investment need by the city. Um, and so what we're doing or prospectively doing today. Is adopting zoning categories that will establish. The requirements on the private property owners, but without any acknowledgement or plan or path. To match that or pair that with a substantial public infrastructure investment.
Yeah, that, that's a great, um, observation, um, Jeffrey, and, and I think, um. You know, for the corridor study, any of the capital type infrastructure improvements that are included in that. Um, are definitely a long ways away from being, you know, implemented. Um, I think as part of the next steps for implementation. You know, we, we would definitely would have to, um, work with the community on kind of, you know, looking at the priorities that are identified in that Tunnel Road corridor study. And then, uh, figure out how that aligns with our, your five-year capital improvement, uh, program. Um, so it, I mean, it could be, you know, possibly a decade out even until any of those infrastructures actually in place. Um, I think it's important to kind of note too for, um, this proposed Urban Place Form District rezoning for this particular site. Um, when you look at the, the existing zoning for the area. Um, it, it already allows, um, quite a lot of development on the site. Um, so even without this proposed rezoning. The applicant, um, or the, the property owner for the mall could build housing, they could build commercial. You know, well, we're, we're trying to recommend with this form code to be applied to this area is that. They start to create kind of the street network, uh, framework and structure that, you know, over time that it. The property, if it were redeveloped, could redevelop in a way that's more walkable and more urban.
Mr. Sotvika?
Yeah, thanks, uh, my computer isn't connecting, so I'm on my phone. But just to add a, a little bit to what Todd said. That a key part of the zoning is beginning to transform the, the private side of land. Because you're right, we need to transform both. This is, this is, this requires as much transformation of the streets as it does to the land uses. And they will both take time, right, property, the, the properties have, uh, many of them long-term leases. And some will turn over slowly, others may be ripe for redevelopment very soon. Um, so we're trying to incrementally move both forwards. Um, on the, on the streets, we have some, uh, some very good corridor studies happening. But the funding even to implement those is years off.
So what's the, I, I know this is a three-year effort and I'm incredibly supportive of the vision and ambition of the Urban Centers Initiative. What's the urgency on, on this particular stretch of it, uh, to do the, the rezoning now? Um, while there's these other pieces out there that haven't, um, been evaluated at the same time?
Well, I'll say that it, it, it all is moving forward incrementally, little by little. So it's not that, um, you know, uh, there's a rush, but we are prioritizing. Those locations that are on the highest frequency transit network first because they have the biggest bang for our buck. The city's investing a lot in transit and we want to begin to have those properties. Hold the new zoning so that as they transition over time. Um, they move in the direction of the Comprehensive Plan. So ultimately, we want to begin to transform the regulations for all of our, our, uh, property to align with the Comprehensive Plan. And that takes time, we can't do it in one foul swoop.
I, I think another kind of challenge when you look at land use and transportation, it's kind of this chicken and the egg. Conundrum that we face where almost a catch-22 that. Um, when we're looking for, to work with partners such as NC DOT, for example. They might ask, well, what, what is the zoning and land use and the urban form? Adjacent to that roadway that you're, that the city might be asking for improved sidewalks or bicycle facilities, for example. Uh, and then oftentimes with these types of corridors, we say, well, they're, they're all, they're very suburban in nature. Um, so, um, we don't get many opportunities to have the streetscape and form. The private development, um, I think one example to that might be, uh, with East Patton Avenue. Uh, east of the bridge and we've been working as part of the I-26 Connector Project on. Uh, we have an opportunity to create like a new gateway into downtown. And there might be surplus land available that we could rezone and redevelop in the future. Um, that's one example where maybe the streetscape could be done first and then we could do, do the development on the private side second. Uh, but in many cases throughout the city, you know, obviously a lot of these sites are like infill development type sites. The, the roadway network is already there. And we're trying to change incrementally, as Vidila mentioned, over time, change the, the form and land use mix. First, and then, and then hopefully the streetscape improvements would follow that. It's, it's very important for us to try to, you know, align those two together. Um, and, and they may not happen at the same time, but, but hopefully they're not too far apart.
I just saw that Commissioner Boo Benick joined, uh, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes. Um, so I'm going to take a quick pause in our discussion, so Ms. Boo Benick. Um, we had a discussion in the pre-meeting about. That since you happen to work at a retailer who is at the Asheville Mall and the Asheville Mall is one of the properties affected by this, uh, particular zoning. Uh, change that there might be a potential conflict of interest. So we just need to ask if you are able to make a fair and impartial, uh, decision regarding this matter.
Yes, I can.
Okay.
I don't, I don't work for the, I mean, I don't work for the mall property.
Correct, yeah, you're, you work for a tenant that's in the mall and so that was, that was our understanding, so. Um, do any of the Commissioners have any, uh, concern? Uh, seeing none, we can go ahead and go back to the, to the discussion. Um, thank you, Commissioner Barton, you know, for your comment because it did come up. Um, I know, uh, the former Chair, Chair Hauser had some questions regarding, you know, public infrastructure and things like that. Um, I do know, I don't believe and, and I know either Mr. O'Clachaini or Mr. Sotvika can answer this. I don't believe any of these parcels. Were in the first phase that essentially are, it, it, until we pass this rezoning are restricted from moving any projects forward. Like the Innsbruck Mall, is that correct? So there's no urgency in that regard.
As far as we know, that's right.
Um, you know, I'd also, you know, I think one of the, you know, if you want to call it urgency, I know there's, you know, certainly with the Innsbruck Mall property, there was some slight urgency about. You know, would it get redeveloped before we had some of this zoning in place? I know, seems like a couple of years ago, there were rumors about redeveloping on the property across from the Asheville Mall, so. You know, I think some of it's trying to maybe get ahead of things that may happen. Um, so that we don't just continue the kind of suburban nature of what's going on down there. But I certainly do appreciate, you know, the comments you're bringing about timing and that.
If I can say one more, uh, response, Commissioner?
Sure.
Um, just to remind everybody that, uh, we have triggers that don't require compliance with the code. Until you do a significant amount of investment. So many of the properties that are being rezoned will continue the way they are for many years. It's only when you trigger a certain threshold, which is primarily about 75% of the value of a building. That creates the requirement that you have to meet the code. And, and even if you meet it, I, I want to, you know, for, for those who, who aren't here before, the code is flexible enough to allow for, um. Quite suburban style development, you know, some of the images I showed, you know, show these multi-story, uh, larger buildings. Uh, but, but the code that was adopted allows for, uh, much lower scale. Um, only actually 50% of the total gross floor area needs to be two stories. So, you know, half of the project can't be single story. So there's a lot of flexibility in there for, uh, maintaining the similar pattern of the conventional development that we see there today.
Commissioner Rodriguez, you had a comment?
Uh, just briefly, and it just, I, 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 I just think, so this is the next logical step since we just, um, dealt with the Sears property. And it would be nice to, to go ahead and, and, and add this portion. So that there's a, a clear understanding of what that, that, that vision is. Um, uh, going forward and, and, and not delayed any for, you know, who knows? Someone may, may come in with a, a larger proposal and it would really be nice to have this urban form in place. Um, on these adjacent parcels as well, that was my only comment.
Okay, if there are no other comments from the Commission, I will open public comment. Uh, I do want to make one comment before I do that, so. Public comment, if we're accepting any live, would be limited to, uh, 10 minutes, or excuse me, three minutes for an individual. Or up to 10 minutes if you're representing, uh, three or more individuals, so. At six o'clock, I'll open public comment.
Excuse me, Chair Archibald, we can't do the 10 minutes because people can't see their time online, so it's unfortunately, it's just individuals, three minutes each.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley, for that clarification.
Chair Archibald, there is one caller in the queue currently, I'm going to bring them in.
Yes, please. And caller, if you can state your name.
Okay, good evening, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Eric Fisher and I am a resident of the Kennelworth neighborhood. Uh, I am speaking on behalf of multiple residents in our neighborhood, but I will try to stay within my three minutes. I will speak quickly. Um, I am concerned, well, I should say, we are concerned about the Urban Place Plan. Um, specifically and, and general, uh, overdevelopment. Um, in particular, uh, I understand the city's desire to increase development throughout the city. To maximize the revenues they receive and to maximize the taxpayers. Uh, I know they, you know, limited on, uh, infill spaces and, um, you know. But they're catering to the developers and ignoring the concerns of the residents of the city, or the voters, or the taxpayers. And, uh, the city is already being overdeveloped and is losing the natural environment that is a major part of the appeal of the city. By continuing to allow this type of rezoning and, and impactful urban development. They are failing their citizens and continuing to destroy the beauty of the city. The majority of residents of the Kennelworth neighborhood are not within close enough proximity to receive notices of all of the proposed projects. Uh, that the Commission does here, the planning and zoning, uh, approves. Uh, but the city does need to do a better job of getting word out to, uh, all the residents. Um, but they also, more importantly, need to put thought into the impact of all these intensive developments. In particular, the infrastructure, uh, which was mentioned, the stormwater and the sediment runoff from these high-intensity projects. We've already seen that the city unfortunately is incapable of enforcing the state and federal regulations. As well as even enforcing their own conditions of approval that they put on projects. Uh, I've seen this firsthand on Tunnel Road, recent developments, uh, major runoff events that have occurred during rainfall. Uh, sediment runs down into the Ross Creek, down into the lake, and it's just where the sediment remains. Um, and it builds up over time in the creek, um, it's caused major issues for the life of the, uh, entire ecosystem. The animals, the fish, uh, the birds that come and migrate. Um, it, it's been a, an issue we brought to the attention of the city many times. Um, over the years, Ross Creek watershed, uh, development has adversely affected the entire ecosystem. It's polluted the waters, reduced the permeable land area, modified the environment, fills the creek, fills the lake. Um, in fact, the lake was 25% larger when it was initially formed. Uh, the state even recognized that the creek and the lake are important assets that need to be protected. And they found that that watershed has been degraded, uh, and in need of restoration. We've documented these activities, uh, we've spoken with state, city, uh, county officials. Um, there's been private and public development that has caused heavy damage to the creek and the lake. Uh, they, on occasion, will send out an officer, county erosion control officers will go out. Uh, they make site visits, uh, they will often, um, issue notices of violation or stop work orders, but it's insufficient because it's after the fact. Uh, there's been no remediation for all of the violations, all the sediment runoff events. Um, that have flowed into the creek and into the lake. Uh, the bottom line is it's, it's unacceptable for too long. Uh, these private developers have treated the creek and the lake as a dumping ground for all their sediment.
Three minutes?
Sorry?
Your three minutes is up now.
All right, well, I, I'm, if I have one more minute, I'll be done. So basically what I'm asking for is cooperation from the city, some forethought into.
I think that the time was up, so.
Yeah.
We can't let people just go on.
Yeah. Are there any other callers?
There are no other callers on the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Do, uh, thank you, Mr. Fisher, I do appreciate your, uh, your comments. Mr. Sotvika, you have your hand raised? You're muted.
You're muted, Vidila.
Sorry, uh, thank you, I, I'd just like to respond to a couple of Mr. Fisher's comments, um, they're, they're, they're good and I'd like to acknowledge them. Um, first about the concern about, um, ignoring residents. Um, we, we worked intensively with the Coalition for Asheville Neighborhoods. Um, and we have their support, they, they supported this project as it went to the City Council. Uh, in working through with them, we reduced the building heights to, uh, acknowledge their concern about shadows and, uh, views. Um, that was our, our, probably the, the biggest change, uh, that we made with them. Uh, I hear your concern about the environment, we've also been working with, uh, a tree commission. Uh, and, and we'll, we'll be bringing in some, some language through the tree preservation ordinance. That will refer to the Urban Place zoning district that will create a, a higher requirement for tree canopy in urban, urban, uh, centers. Uh, sort of tangential to this, it's not happening now, but just to let you know that it's coming. And as far as stormwater, um, our department of Planning and Urban Design also has an ordinance that is looking at this, again, not as part of this because it's separate. But through an open space initiative that will, um, seriously increase the amount of stormwater that is captured on large redevelopment sites. Um, exactly like what we see in the mall, so we are, we are doing other things that, that will, um, address your concerns, Mr. Fisher. And, uh, I appreciate you making the comment, um, they just, um, some of them will come at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sotvika, and, and I would add too, Mr. Fisher, I do appreciate your comments, I, you know, certainly, uh. I would say that, you know, one of the reasons we're, we're working to bring some of this rezoning, especially with regard to Urban Place. Is, it may not seem like it, but to help the environment so we don't essentially just continue to build out. That we densify, um, the region so that we aren't driving, building more roads. Um, you know, taking away hillsides, things like that, so, um, again, I do appreciate your comments. Are there any other comments or discussion among the Commissioners?
Um, I'd just like to say thank you, Mr. Fisher, for calling in and, uh. Uh, first of all, Mr. Sotvika and the Planning Department, I really appreciate your efforts here, but, um. I, I do share a lot of concerns that Mr. Fisher raised with the stormwater stuff, and I know that's not necessarily this project or this. Thing we're dealing with right now, but, um, um, that is a huge concern for me, just because I've seen firsthand where. That's been eroded and as an angler and a canoeing person and a person who enjoys the waterways here. I am very concerned about the amount of erosion and sediment being dumped into the waters and that's just for public record, I know that. I'm sorry if I'm going on a tangent here, that, that's not necessarily contributing to this particular issue at the moment, but I just wanted to. Support what Mr. Fisher said.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Faircloth, yes, Mr. Sotvika? Muted.
I'm sorry, I keep doing that. Um, thank you, Commissioner Faircloth, just to give you a little bit of background to the nuance here. We are somewhat limited in, in how much we can control stormwater because of state statute. And, um, so we will be bringing you an ordinance. Um, I believe we're scheduled for December, um, for a wording amendment for open space. That will have a creative solution to specifically this issue, so hang tight, uh, it's coming.
Okay, thank you for your hard work.
Okay, if there are. Okay, if there are, there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion from somebody.
I'll make a motion.
You're it tonight.
I tell you, I move to approve the rezoning request for Phase 2 properties that include approximately 128 acres of property from Regional Business RB, River RIV, Residential Multi-Family High Density District RM16, and Residential Single Family Medium Density District RS4 to Urban Place Form UP District, and find that the proposed rezoning is reasonable, in the public interest, consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and aligned with developmental needs of the community in that rezoning will, number one, encourage responsible growth, number two, increase mixed use development along transit corridors, number three, improve urban design, four, make streets more walkable, comfortable, and connected, number five, increase housing supply and encourage the development of affordable housing, and six, facilitate development that maximizes public benefit.
I'll second that. And we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Levi?
Aye.
Mr. Faircloth?
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Hope?
Aye.
Ms. Bubenek?
Aye.
And Mr. Barton?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes 6 to 1. Thank you very much, Mr. Sotka.
Joe, did you state your vote?
Oh, sorry, I vote aye as well. Sorry, I may not have. Thank you Shannon. Thank you, Mr. Sotka, for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to the ministerial public hearings. Just a quick note on these. So both of these next two items are Level 2 items. They are both in the downtown area, the central business district of downtown. Essentially, the Planning and Zoning Commission acts as a ministerial technical review. So, any public comments that we may hear need to be based solely on the technical merits of the project, not on design, you know, or anything like that. That is not what this review is for. The first one is a request for the site plan review for a new hotel located at 51 Biltmore Avenue. The property is identified as PIN 9648493593 in the Buckham County tax record. The owner is J.B. McKibben Limited and the project contact is Warren Suggs. Planner coordinating review is Shannon Tuck.
Thank you Chair Archibald. So as Mr. Archibald has indicated this, oh, I'm sorry, hang on one second, my, there we go. There we go. This next item on your agenda is the first of your ministerial reviews for the property located at 51 Biltmore Avenue. You can see the site located there in the center of your screen. It is located in our downtown and is currently zoned CBD/ZZ. And that is because the property was conditionally rezoned back in 2008 for the purpose of constructing a hotel and a parking garage. So this is, most of us would probably recognize the Aloft Hotel on Biltmore Avenue. That was the development that came back, or came in at 2008 and requested that conditional zoning. The city participated. It was a private-public partnership and it included a parking garage as well, which is in place today. As Mr. Archibald had indicated, the request is for the purpose of constructing a new second hotel next to the Aloft Hotel. And in order to do that now in the city of Asheville, you must be located within one of the city's hotel overlay zones. And so you can see the map on the right shows the overlay zones are turned on. The blue is the designation that allows small or large hotels, or really hotels of any size. The orange indicates that only small hotels would be permitted. So, so this is in the blue zone, which would allow larger hotels. The aerial imagery shows the site as it's currently developed. You can see the hotel, I should have mentioned, the property is located on the intersection or on the corner, the southwest corner of Aston Street and Biltmore Avenue here. This is the Aloft Hotel and then you have the city parking garage here and kind of tucked, kind of inside the project. So in 2008, the land uses that came before council as part of that conditional zoning was the hotel and the parking garage. But it was definitely proposed to be three condominiums. So there was a third future building that would be constructed at a later date, not unlike the conditional zoning amendment you heard earlier. When you know specifically what you want to construct, that's part of your site plan approval and your proposal. But there could be some future development that comes along later. So, it, this Level 2 is that future development that's coming in now. It will be the third condominium that was contemplated back in 2008. So the development is consistent with what was approved as part of that conditional zoning. So an amendment to the conditional zoning is not required. We're just basically completing the vision that was adopted as part of that conditional zoning. The new hotel will fill the, this void area. If you're familiar with Biltmore Avenue, you've probably recognized that. I'm going to switch screens here really quickly and show you the site as it is today. This is that void that I was just pointing out on the aerial image. The hotel will be located here and it's unique in that it will go up and then over the structure that you see here. So if we go, we exit to the street view, you can kind of see, I think that's part of the parking garage. So it's going to come up and then it's going to go over the top of that and be constructed. And I'm gonna go back to my presentation. So, the building, it will be a condominium. It is technically classified as a building addition, but it's going to be reviewed as a standalone Level 2. It is a new separate hotel, but it will be connected to the existing structure through some shared amenity space with the existing Aloft Hotel. Most of these, most of the commission members will either participated or will recall the city's adoption of the hotel standards that created the overlay zoning. In order, those standards provided an option for hotels to bypass the conditional zoning review process and be reviewed as Level 2s if they achieved two things. One is that, well, excuse me, three things. One, that they meet all the technical standards, that they incorporate public benefits as established in the public benefits table that was adopted as part of that ordinance, and that they receive a positive recommendation from the design review committee. So this project has been before technical review and it has been found to comply with the technical standards. It's not unusual to have minor conditions associated with that approval that will be resolved at final TRC. A copy of your technical review staff report was included in your packets. But the proposal is for a multi-story, 45,000 square foot hotel. It will be eight stories tall, approximately 74 feet, 115 hotel rooms. As I mentioned earlier, it will be connected to the existing hotel through some shared amenity areas. There will also be a ground level cafe lobby area that folks will be able to enter into the hotel from, from the street, from Biltmore Avenue. There is very limited site work. Essentially, because the construction is isolated in this sort of southern area, really, the only site work that's going to occur is the reconstruction of the sidewalk on Biltmore Avenue. There, there could be some additional improvements to this alley. This is the site plan that was reviewed and approved by the technical review committee, but the applicant has produced an alternative that was reviewed by the design review committee that showed some pedestrian enhancements to this alley that would be better supported by closing the alley to vehicular access. So that would require placing off-street loading on the street, probably in front of the driveway, the existing driveway, since that would no longer be needed. This has not yet been approved by the technical review staff, so it's not being presented to you today. But should that alternative be approved, then that will be wrapped up in the final review of those technical plans before construction permitting. The site work will also include the relocation of the existing shelter. You may have noticed it in the Google Street View that I showed a moment ago. That existing shelter is currently located pretty much right in front of the front door. So that's not an ideal location for, for either party. So, the applicant is proposing to relocate it just slightly to the south, still in front of their project, but just not in front of the door. And then, the parking requirement will be satisfied through some parking spaces that had already been set aside as part of that original conditional zoning that are in the existing parking structure. So that requirement will also be satisfied. I'm going to just quickly go through the building elevations and some of the perspective views. These were looked at more thoroughly during the design review process, but I thought it would be something that you all could be interested in. First, you see, this is the east elevation or the view from Biltmore Avenue. It's essentially the front of the building. And you can see that the new construction there on the left, the existing building is ghosted there in gray. So you can see how it'll, it'll just fit right up against it. You can tell the character is a little bit different. It's meant to be distinct from the existing structure. It is a separate hotel, as I mentioned, so having it be distinct is both beneficial from a design standpoint, but also even probably just for public perception. You know, it's more easy to recognize that it's a separate building with a separate entrance. The character is more industrial in style. It's predominantly steel and glass on the front facade. There are some wood accents, as well as the use of ephes on some of the other facades that I'll show you here in a moment. So if you turn the corner, this is the view from the alley to the south. And you can see how the building goes up and over now. You can see those new levels that will basically be on top of the existing parking garage. And you can see sort of the two-toned ephes that is proposed with the, some more glass and steel. And then going around to South Lexington, you can see, you just see this one little piece of the new construction. What is here today is the relatively new apartments that were added as an infill project. And then rounding it out, the view from Aston on the, from the north, you can again see how the project goes up and over that, as kind of that saddle with the hotel rooms. And then the perspective views, I think, you know, do a nice job of kind of showing how the project fits in with the existing context. So there's your view looking northwest, looking northeast. That's the alley down here, running in between the project and the adjacent stone building. From Biltmore Avenue looking south, so that's the front of the building, and from the avenue looking north. And that is the correct location of the transit shelter, but the character of that shelter is changed. I'll explain that here again in a little bit. So, as a Level 2, the project went for technical review back in May and it was approved with conditions. We, because it's in our downtown, it also goes before the downtown commission. They no longer perform the design review function however, so they just hear the project and they offer any, any feedback that they may offer gets carried to the design review committee for their consideration. That was reviewed and approved on September 16th. The committee did approve the project with conditions. So they didn't require that it comes back to them for any kind of re-review. They didn't have that level of concern. So when they approve it with conditions, they just expect staff to kind of follow up and make sure that those conditions are addressed before construction permits are issued. The three conditions that were specifically stated in the motion were to explore best practices for optimal street health, street tree health, explore appropriate site lighting, and add some detail into the south facade adjacent to the alley to, in order to provide some interest and relief to that facade. It was also discussed that a more congruous transit shelter, so something that's more architecturally compatible with that industrial character be considered as opposed to the, the older shelter that is out there today. It's just, I think the sentiment was such a shame, it's such a nice new building, it would be nice to have a transit shelter that was more reflective of that. It was not, I don't know if it was an oversight or what, or what exactly, but it was not explicitly included in the motion with the conditions, but it was definitely discussed. And the applicant has responded to those conditions. So you can see the image in the upper right shows that new, more architecturally compatible transit shelter that they were proposing. Our transportation staff are currently, and public works staff are currently reviewing this and it seems like they're, they're comfortable with it. And so this will probably be the new transit shelter. And then regarding the, the interest and relief along the facade that butts the alley, the applicant has also responded and has provided this image in the lower left-hand corner. It's a little, it's probably a little bit hard to tell from your screens, but, and maybe the applicant can kind of speak to what that treatment is, but they're offering a little texture to that ephes. And I'm not sure if that's a scoring or an etching of some kind, or if it's something else, but I'll let them explain that. The other conditions were just to explore site lighting, explore best practices for street trees. The city is currently working with certain stakeholders in our community about new details for street tree planting. So we'll probably rely on that expertise and those discussions in order to kind of help guide what's appropriate here. More than likely will involve the use of silver cells or something along that, those lines. And then site lighting, I think we'll just work closely with the architect to ensure that there's adequate site lighting. It's, it's rare that a building in our downtown is not adequately lit, but we will double-check that before permits are issued. So in conclusion, staff finds that all the technical standards have been or able to be satisfied and we do comfortably recommend approval. We think it's a good project, it's a good addition, and we look forward to its construction. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know the applicant and some of their team members are here as well. They may have some additional information to add.
Thank you Ms. Tuck. Any questions from the commission at this moment? There's none of the...
I have a question.
Sorry, go ahead.
Just from like the drawing as far as the bus stop. I know a couple meetings ago, we talked about making the sidewalks in town more ADA accessible. So, could we just like get confirmation that that bus stop wouldn't be in the middle of the sidewalk and it would be more ADA accessible for, like to make the sidewalks more ADA accessible?
So, our sidewalks have to be 10 feet wide. And one of the reasons we make them so wide is so that there's plenty of other street furniture, like transit shelters, benches, street trees, things like that. So, it will definitely be ADA accessible. That is a federal requirement, there's no way around it. Our transportation staff will also be reviewing the shelter, if they haven't already, for like wheelchair accessibility. You have to be able to kind of wheel in and under shelter. So some of the old traditional designs that we may be familiar with are no longer permitted because they don't adequately meet accessibility needs. So I feel comfortable saying that this will be fully ADA compliant.
Okay. I know it's 36 inches. We have to have it at work. So I just want to make sure that there's 36 inches for the wheelchair to get by.
It'll be more than 36 inches.
All right, thank you.
I should not have, I guess I got cut off there for a second. You did mention hotel, plus are they going to add the condos in the back like existing Aloft Hotel?
No, this will just be hotel rooms. And then the cafe on the ground level.
Commissioner Levi?
Yes, I was wondering about this alley. I see the images cut off in the slide, but I remember from the... but I remember from the plans that was going to be a bar, I believe, on the side of the building. So I know from other projects, you know, that shutting down of an alley has not been approved or would not be approved. I'm just curious what the process is for that alley and whether this is likely.
Yeah, so we have a meeting tomorrow with the applicant's representatives and staff, myself and staff from our Public Works and Transportation Departments to discuss this. The concern, the proposal was never to close the alley just to block vehicular access to the alley. So the intent was always to keep the alley open, but to prioritize pedestrian and bike movement as opposed to vehicular movement. However, that is a little, there are some concerns related to that. We do rely heavily on our alleys to provide off-street loading and access to these commercial properties. So that was one concern. Additionally, the applicant, as part of their overall plan, would have to have an accessible, for their ideal plan, they would have to have an accessible walkway in that alley in order to reach an exterior entrance that I believe accesses an elevator, maybe to the rooftop or to other parts of the hotel. That walkway would be a permanent encroachment in the alley. That's also a concern. So it's not that these concerns can't potentially be overcome. We just don't know what that solution might be just yet, or whether or not there is a solution that can work for everybody. So that's part of the reason for the meeting tomorrow, to kind of explore that further. But that's a technical off-site improvement. From, you know, the idea of improving the alley for pedestrian use, there's certainly no problem with that. It's really just the other consequence of losing that vehicular off-street loading and the potential encroachment that could be, you know, what stops this from happening. But the alley will definitely remain open either way. It just might look a little bit different. Does that answer your question?
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Shannon, could you please reiterate exactly what criteria we're using so that we...
Sure.
Know what we're, exactly what we're voting for here.
Right, so this is a ministerial review, which means we're looking at the project's ability to comply with the technical standards only. So consistency with the comprehensive plan, concerns about traffic, other off-site improvements, public benefits other than what is required by the ordinance. That is all things that we typically take up with conditional zonings, where we have a legislative hearing. This is not that, so we're only looking at minimal technical compliance. It's already been approved by the DRC. It's already been approved by the Technical Review Committee. So normally, these discussions go quickly, but this is one of the first of these projects that involves the hotel that is bypassing the conditional zoning process. So I thought it would be something, you know, that was worth providing a little bit more detail in this hearing for you all, since you were also involved in that process as well.
Thanks. Yeah, I was curious about that alley as well, too. You know, and I appreciate Commissioner Levi for bringing it up. You know, I think if it was, you know, to come before, and I know the whole process for closing these alleys may or may not end up having to go through multimodal, but you know, multimodal transit has had a lot of discussions about, you know, alley closures and things, and they typically are closing an alley so the developer has more land. In this case, closing it for vehicular traffic to make it more pedestrian-friendly, I think would be a win-win for everyone. Obviously, there needs to be, you know, some allowance for, you know, off-site, off-street loading and things like that. And again, that's another technical thing that would certainly be dealt with at the staff level, so. But I appreciate the, at least desire for the developer to look at that, because I think having that as more pedestrian-oriented, it already is pedestrian-oriented, but enhancing that, I think, would be a great benefit, so. Yeah, Mr. Rodriguez, did you have a...
I just wanted to say that in the Downtown Commission, we really did talk about making that much more of a pedestrian-friendly cut through. So that's, and I believe that's been dealt with as much as they can at this point, so.
All right, at this point, I'd like to open it up for the applicant or their representative, whoever that may be.
Good afternoon, this is Buck Lindsey, architect working for the developer. This project has been uncannily well-received by everyone we've presented it to. It's been before the Design Review Committee, who seem to be very attracted to the newness of this design style in the city, but appropriateness, how it fits in. We also have a franchise that's coming out of Marriott. Marriott franchises the Aloft Hotel. And this new hotel, which will be a relatively new brand published by Marriott called Moxie, has a very unique presentation itself. And Marriott is extremely excited about this design. They've already given us their initial input, and they're totally on board with our design concepts. It's unusual that we have such a consensus going on, and I appreciate staff's recommendation for approval, but Shannon did a great job explaining what we're trying to do. The only part that she might have missed would be a feature restaurant on the top level of the hotel that will have open terraces facing out across Lexington and lots of glass with views looking at the mountains and all different directions beyond. It will not be a named restaurant by Marriott or by Moxie. It will be a unique restaurant themed to fit this appropriate location and atmosphere. And that'll be a special place that we anticipate a lot of non-hotel guests participating in something special for this particular location. But Shannon, thank you for a great presentation. We're ready to go.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lindsey. Any other discussion, again, about technical review before I open it up for a public comment? Seeing none, I will open for public comment at 6:37.
There are no callers, Chair O'Trumball.
And I will close public comment at 6:37. All right, go ahead and do a roll call vote. Commissioner Levi? Oh, excuse me, jumping ahead of myself. Ready to go on this one.
Get a motion first.
I make, I move to recommend approval of the project located at 51 Biltmore Avenue as presented based on site plans, elevations, and materials submitted and discussion heard during this review, subject to addressing any outstanding technical conditions.
Thanks, I didn't mean to put you on the spot for that.
I'll second that.
Now, now you may want to ask for votes.
Sorry. Commissioner Levi?
I vote yes, aye.
Okay, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Aye.
Commissioner Faircloth?
Aye.
Commissioner Hope?
Aye.
Commissioner Barton?
Aye.
Commissioner Bubeneck?
Nay.
And I will vote aye as well. The motion passes six to one. Thank you very much, Mr. Lindsey and Ms. Tuck. Moving on to the last item on the agenda, again, is another ministerial review, level-two project. The request for a site plan review for a new residential building located at 217 Hilliard Avenue. Property is identified as PIN 9648-296171 in the Buncombe County tax record. Owner is Maury Blue Holdings LLC, and the project contact is Warren Sugg. Planner coordinating review is Sasha Vertenski. Good evening, Ms. Vertenski, we haven't seen you in a while. I think you're muted.
Sasha, we can't hear you.
I think she froze.
All right, let's just give her a minute and see if she'll come back in. And if she doesn't, then I'll try to pick up.
Okay, yeah.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I called in, sorry. I have a little internet outage. Let me share my screen. So yes, it's probably been a couple of years since I've been in front of P&amp;Z. And so some of you don't even know who I am, but I work with Vidilla in long-range planning, and I have been working with the design review process and the Design Review Committee since that started. So I'm taking a couple of projects to help, so Shannon doesn't have to be just a one-person show. So this project is 217 Hilliard. It's a level two, it's a ministerial review, just like the project you reviewed with the Moxie. And I won't be able to see you, so if for some reason you can't hear me, or please just speak up. So this is the Exhibit A map. This project is between Ashland and Grove Street along Hilliard Avenue. And there currently, there is an existing historic house and a parking lot. And this project won't be, you know, touching the historic house. Basically, this whole site is about a quarter of an acre, and they are carving off, or closer to a half acre, sorry. And they are carving off the parking lot and a little bit of a notch here for about 0.18 acre for development. And here's the site plan. So basically, this is a 33,000 square foot building, five stories, 80 residential units. They are micro units, so each unit is around between like eight, excuse me, 180 to 250 square feet. There might be a couple of larger units. And each floor has a shared laundry, kitchen, lounge, and storage area. There's bicycle storage in this building, but no vehicle parking. And there is no parking required in the CBD for non-hotel projects. And that's been a longstanding standard since the UDO was adopted. Also, in this site plan, you'll see there is a brand-new 10-foot sidewalk in front of the building, which is a great addition. Currently out there, the sidewalk is probably about two feet wide. And they are also extending that sidewalk all the way to Grove Street in front of the house, the side of the house, to eight feet. So they're fully complying with our sidewalk requirements. And there's going to be a slight restriping of Hilliard, and we'll maintain a five-foot bike lane westbound and 11-foot travel lanes. And here's the site plan. They are required for three, these street trees. They have tree canopy preservation areas equal to 5% of the lot area, and they're paying a fee in lieu for the other 5%. So in CBD, for anybody who's, I think most of you know, we don't have building impact landscaping, and there's no parking lot to buffer those just simply street trees here. So here are some elevations. This is facing Hilliard, the front of the building. In the CBD, on key pedestrian streets, we have a 70% by-length fenestration requirement, and they're meeting that, and they're meeting the fenestration on the upper levels. This is the building elevation looking, you know, from Grove, you know, behind the house on Grove Street. And this is the rear of the building. And then this is the east elevation. So this would be the face, facing the hotspot, gas station, convenience store there. And this is a short, you know, screening wall that screens these residential units there. And then I just included, like Shannon, I'm following Shannon's lead here, included the building renderings that they, that were reviewed by the Design Review Committee. This is from the other direction on Hilliard. This mural has not been decided upon yet, so that's for future consideration for them. We don't really have standards for murals at this point. As long as they are not violating the sign ordinance by advertising a business within, you know, murals are allowed in Asheville. And I included the materials, just in case you're interested. I'm flying through this, so I will definitely answer any questions you have. But this project has been through technical review in August and was approved with conditions. The Downtown Commission heard the project and had a pretty good, very good conversation about it, and which carried over into the Design Review Committee. And the Design Review Committee reviewed it and approved it with recommendations, you know, around tree planting practices, lighting, and preserving granite curb. So there is granite curb in front of this project. And I think I misstated this design review, but when you have granite curb in a project, you have to, you have to put it back in the CBD. Parts of it, it's not clear if it's missing or buried under pavement, but, so that's, you know, an issue that we'll go through in final TRC. So, and basically, we're recommending approval. It's a, this is a pretty clean review, one of the cleaner reviews I've ever gone through. I'd be happy to take any questions from the commission. And I should also say, the architect and the design team are also here.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Vertenski. Ms. Bubeneck, you have a question?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I just want to make sure, this is going in like the parking lot in between the hotspot and the house, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, can you tell me about the sidewalks again? Right now, they're two feet. I know they're really small. I literally just walked on those like a week ago. I was like, man, this is not going to be bad. And then can you tell me how, how they're going to improve?
Sure. So the sidewalk standard in downtown is for a 10-foot sidewalk. So for the frontage of this new lot here, from the parcel line to, you know, parcel line, they are making a 10-foot sidewalk. There is a historic wall here as well. And so in front of that, in part of that wall will be kind of lost, a small part of it, I think, here. But the remainder of the sidewalk to Grove Street will be an eight-foot sidewalk.
So will that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So, I mean, I'm looking at the picture on Google Maps right now, and that's pretty clear. So will that go all the way up, like in front of the house, like the new 10-foot sidewalk? Or will it just be like in the little parcel that we're talking about?
Yes, so 10 feet in front of the new parcel, and then from that, that western property line, I have it on the screen. I guess it sounds like you can't, from the western property line, will be eight feet. It does not wrap around onto Grove Street.
No, I can see your rendering, but like if you bring it up on Google Maps, it's really clear, like the... The picture, so. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it'll capture, it will capture the intersection at Grove Street. So we'll get a good ADA up there at Grove and Hilliard, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other initial questions or comments from commission members? Seeing none, would the applicant like to present now?
Good evening, Chair and members...
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. Warren Sugg with Civil Design Concepts. Thank you for allowing us to be on the hearing tonight. Thank you, Sasha, for giving the presentation. She did a great job. I'll just touch on a couple of things, and I'm also going to turn it over to Brian Cook with McMillan and Hassan Smith to give a little more in-depth on the architecture. I'm also joined by Scott Shapiro and David Mortz, who are the clients and the developers on the project. But we're very excited about the project. I think it is a great infill project that, as mentioned, is taking a parking lot and making much-needed housing in that spot. And we are able to do some improvements with the sidewalk and street trees, as well as that restriping that Sasha was talking about. We were able to speak with Ken Putnam on a few weeks ago and get a better sort of alignment through that area. So I'm very excited about the project available for any questions you have from the, from the civil perspective. And I'll turn it over to Brian and let him touch on any architecture things.
Yeah, thank you, Warren. Yeah, this is Brian Cook with McMillan and Hassan Smith Architecture. And I thank you all for, for reviewing this today. And Sasha, I guess, I second Warren's comments. Thank you for your, your, your presentation on this. Yeah, I mean, this, this, we're excited about this project. It's all, you know, it's all rental apartments. It's a new type of rental option that's coming to Asheville. And, and we're just excited to see, see it go up and see how it can provide to, to the people of our community. And I'm happy to also ask any, or answer any questions that you all have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sugg and Mr. Cook very much. I know there was one comment in the TRC, and I noted it as well, about the trash service. Have you, or can you just kind of explain what's, what's happening with that?
Yeah, so trash collection will all be within the building. And Sasha, if you go back to that elevation on Hilliard?
Sure.
Yeah, so that, so that, that door where the arrow is pointing, that is a glass overhead door. That will be screened. But behind that is, is our trash room that's internal to the building. And we'll be working with a, with a trash service that will come and collect from the street. So bins will be, will be rolled out from, from that overhead door to the, to the curb, and collection will be, will happen there.
Okay, so it's going to be bins, not a, not a dumpster that gets rolled out then, correct?
We're not, we're not, we're not, we're not sure yet. It may be, it may be the, you know, the typical City of Asheville bins. It may be a smaller, like four-yard, you know, larger bin that gets rolled out. But, but we haven't gotten all the details yet of who, who will be working with for, for trash collection. But once we have that, those details, we'll be able to provide that.
Okay. I just, I have a kind of curious question. Do you know what the, or has the owner kind of know what the rents are proposed to be?
Not, not specifically at the moment. I mean, it's, you know, it's only based on, you know, what the market is at the time of opening. But, but what we can say is that these will, these will most likely meet a, an affordable area or a workforce area of rental that is lacking in the city.
Any other comments or questions from the commission members?
I just wanted to, Joe, I may have missed it, but is there a certain amount of them that needs to be affordable, or just that's out of the scope of how many apartments they have?
Perhaps, Ms. Vertenski, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's really no requirement as far as Level Two in this particular case.
That's correct. I mean, in North Carolina, we don't have inclusionary zoning, so we, we can't require it. If, I don't know, and, you know, it's always an option to pursue a land use incentive grant with the city, where if the city, if you come to an agreement and city council approves it, there would probably be a percentage of units affordable for probably, usually around 20 years. But that's not, hasn't happened yet with this party, and it's kind of a separate decision from the zoning permit.
Okay. Well, the owners can pursue that on their own, but they have not yet, correct?
As far as I know, correct.
Yeah, this is probably one of the few housing projects that we have seen lately that, that would not, you know, fall under, you know, some kind of affordable housing, or at least be proposing it. So there are no other comments or questions at the moment. I'll go ahead and open up for public comment at 6:55.
Chair, there are no callers.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Two. Any other further discussion among the commissioners?
I'd just like to point out one thing. If the site is one, is .18 acres, and we're providing 80 units of housing, that calculates about 440 units per acre, which is amazing. And I just wanted to point that out, because when you look at this elevation, that level of density, which would raise, certainly raise alarm bells on any project, is not scary when you look at it. This is a great project that clearly satisfies all the technical conditions. And unless there's other discussion, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Yeah, just real, real quick, Commissioner Barton. Yeah, I would, you know, imagine trying to put 440 units per acre on, I don't know, say, Charlotte Street. Yeah, I'll happy to entertain your motion.
Well, I move to recommend approval of the project located at 217 Hilliard Avenue as presented based on site plans, elevations, and materials submitted and discussion heard during this review, subject to addressing any outstanding technical conditions.
I'll second that.
Was that Commissioner Faircloth, or?
That's Gil.
Gil, okay. Sorry about that. All right. We'll do another roll call vote. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Faircloth?
Aye.
Commissioner Barton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hope?
Nay.
Commissioner Levi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Boobennick?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. Motion passes six to one. Thank you very much, Mr. Sugg.
Thank, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you as well, Ms. Vertenski.
Thank you all.
That wraps up tonight's agenda. Unless there is anything else, I would like to make a, a comment. I'm glad Mr. Rodriguez was able to come back one more time. Don't know if he'll be back again, but thank you, Guillermo, for, you know, filling in one last time.
Always glad to help out.
Yep. The next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission will be Wednesday, November 3rd at 5:00 PM. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Congratulations, Kim and Joe, and welcome.
Thanks.